Okay, I want to stop on old two or something like that. Here on flag allegiance?
I flag allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Commissioner Salasvito?
Here.
Commissioner Teelander?
Here.
Commissioners Gerard and Jerzans Drar absent tonight and Vice Chair Ken Walker.
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
I'll make a motion to accept the John Gerard and James Zancho's absence tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, now we're approval of the minutes, previous minutes, or approval of the agenda? And we want to switch, approval of the agenda, but we got to switch something?
No, approval of that, those guys are missing.
Oh.
We have to vote. Well, we had it first and second, now we have both.
Okay. Everybody, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any notes? Okay, now we're good to go. Okay, number two, approval of the agenda. You wanted to switch number six and five around?
Yes.
Other than that, motions for that?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes five and six and as written.
I'll second.
Okay, everybody, yes?
Yes.
No? Okay. Approval of the minutes from previous meeting, April 11.
Make a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll second.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
No? Okay. Public comments and concerns not on the agenda. Nobody's rushing it. Okay, we'll close that, and now we're going to go to new business. With the site plan review, D E A T. Anything for that?
Yeah, just a little bit of background for you guys, so this is the, connected to the property where the Dollar Tree is located. This was the site plan that was originally approved in 2013, so about three years ago. And so they're not actually asking for a change to the physical layout of the site, but they are asking to remove one of the conditions of approval. And so there's a brief memo that I wrote to you dated May 4th that talks about this. And so if you look on the first page there, there are probably six items. These are the original conditions of the approval for May 2013. And if you read the last one, item six, it says, "The existing access from the subject property to West Street shall be maintained either in its present form or through an access easement for the proposed split parcel." And so with the information submitted by the applicant, I think you can kind of see that the entire parcel here is kind of an L-shaped parcel, so it extends south off of Main Street, and then it turns and heads east towards, towards West Street there, so it makes an L. There's just kind of a large parking lot there that was there for the, I think it was a Burger King before. And so the parking was there at that time. So what was desired at the May 2013 meeting was that an access would be maintained somehow that would let people get from the Dollar Tree site out towards West Street, so they're not taking an additional left or right out onto Main Street instead. So the applicant, my understanding is that there's somebody interested in purchasing the property that's on, that would front on West Street, so they're looking actually dividing the property, selling the portion on West Street to somebody else who would then build the building. And so I guess the person who would be purchasing it doesn't want the extra traffic going through this site, and that's why they've asked for this amendment to make that happen.
Sounds good to me. You guys got anything?
What would they put their barriers then to stop that flow?
Yeah, I mean presumably the, I don't know how that site would get designed exactly. The way that it's written now, there would have to be something in place, either an access easement or leaving the physical, you know, the physical connection that they're now in place to allow that traffic through. So if that were eliminated, they could then put up a fence or, you know, put some landscaping back there, or something that would block off that particular point of access. How that would specifically be accomplished, I don't know. I don't know, I think applicants here, I don't know if it's a prospective purchaser is here, so it may be appropriate to ask them if they can answer some of those questions for you, so you have a better idea of what it would look like moving forward.
Well, and this, right here, it shows they want to put green space in there and parking it. Now, is this a drawing done from original, or is this something that's current?
That's, that's what was approved except for, the way that it actually developed is that I think the dumpsters, they're in a slightly different location maybe, but the actual physical connection there that goes, that goes through to West Street is still there. So it's not developed, because we required that connection to West Street through that parking lot, they didn't put that green space in because we asked them not to. And so, yeah, they might, they might just put that green space in, you know?
Contenu.
Curve that, yeah, and just, you know, build a curve there where the parking lot would end, and then have a few feet of green space in between the two sites. You know, that's, I guess would be up to them, how to do it specifically.
I think Dave and I were on the planet when we talked about that, knowing the fact that this could be developed and have a later date, and at the time it was a good idea, and I think it's a good idea.
It's nice to keep the traffic off M-21 going around. But same point, having somebody build there would be great too.
Rose Parker, no we, next month, actually. Did they fulfill all of the conditions for the prior site plan? I mean, everything here was at all fulfilled?
So first, I know, yeah, I don't, I'm not aware of anything that wasn't, that wasn't done in accordance with their approval.
So anybody got any comments on that?
Ron?
Design.
Who?
My name is Chris Markle with R G M Design, and I'm a representative of the applicant. I guess I'll just show you, this was the, actually the site plan that was the Burger King. So you guys can kind of see how, you know, that parking lot splits both ways, and you were correct, this is now really down here, that's where the dumpster is. So it has changed a little bit based on when the Dollar Tree design went in, and I even think that design is probably a little different than it is currently. So there's just a couple of things that the applicant wanted to explain. The easement's never really been used. We did provide access by leaving that parking lot there, but it's never been really a requirement. They never went for an easement, so it's never really been shown on the survey, so that really never came about. But they did keep the parking lot there for ease of traffic, if that need to be. The potential buyer, well, Dollar Tree really doesn't want to have an easement either, they don't want to have the expense of the easement, they don't want to share it with the potential buyer as well. It's my understanding that the buyer doesn't want the easement, so there's a little bit of a conflict there with that. The buyer also has some really concerns about traffic going through his business. I understand that he has some employees that are handicapped, that he has some concerns about with cars going through, possibly on a regular basis during work hours. He doesn't really have a way to, I don't want to say contain them, but he just has a little bit of fear about that. I don't want to hit it, did you throw one in the site plan that I had sent to you into that packet? I know that...
Yeah, I think in the packet, there's the, one of the last pages that was sent here is the, the plans for the, no, I think it's, keep going, a couple pages further, there's the, yeah, there's, there's kind of a rough sketch.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that was from the buyer, that's really a preliminary sketch, being a landscape architect, we looked at it as well, and I know that based on the requirements, they're going to need X amount of parking. You know, I think it's very, very rough, but knowing that site, knowing the setbacks, there's really not a lot of places where that building can sit. Has to turn and probably block that drive pretty heavily somehow, and you can even see they're looking to expand and move on. So briefly knowing the history of this whole project, I'm, Burger King sat there for a long time with nothing being done, and then, you know, Dollar Tree went in there, and now this extra parking is kind of sitting there. So, you know, it's nice to have, have a buyer that's really interested in that. I will agree with one of Andy's comments, that it is nice to have a pass-through, but I also think it agrees when it's retail to retail, but we're talking about a business that isn't going to be retail, so to have that connection, I'm not sure if that really works, and that's just my personal opinion. So with that being said, you know, I just, like I said, I think the site plan kind of speaks volumes of what they're trying to do, so I hope you can see that there might be some conflict in trying to connect those, so.
Is the partial one today from M-21 all the way back to the property line to where the end of it is, or are there two specific parcels there?
There is, was that survey in there as well?
I looked it.
I can pass this around. This was the, this is the actual survey.
Yeah, this is in there too, this, this looks like the...
It looks like a giant L that's got, I believe it's two separate parcels that the individual's trying to purchase.
Okay.
So it's really this, this section here.
Okay.
Yeah, and so just for clarification there, the planning commission didn't require an easement, it required either an easement or the parking, you know, that parking area and driveway to be maintained. Since Dollar Tree owns the entire thing, they never had to get an easement. Now, if they would split it off, they would need to do that because they wouldn't own the other piece anymore.
Now, is there a vacant lot between that and Speedway? Or not?
No, no, I believe this is Speedway's.
I think there is.
There might be a small.
I think there's a little vacant lot right there.
To the south, there is on West Street, that's south of the gas station, there's a really narrow line.
There used to be a house.
Yeah, that burnt down.
Yep.
Had to be nice.
And I'm not, I'm not, I think this is residential, am I correct? And I'm below.
I guess.
So you're really connector points, you have the auto dealership and the gas station. So, I mean, you know, I can, I can understand trying to keep the connection going here, but like I said, I think with it not being retail, and it just being another business, I think that maybe this is adequate enough for Dollar Tree, but yes.
Yeah, it just puts everybody back on 21, but hasn't been a lot of accidents there.
I don't know.
Any of your guys' comments, what do you guys think?
When we, when I had my construction company, we did a lot of that kind of stuff, and I've done it both ways. I've done it where we've gone back, we've asked to split it, kind of like this, and we tried to find a way to get the second means of egress out of the, and sometimes it just can't happen.
Yeah.
You look at this, personally, I don't see how they can make a second means of egress without purchasing more property.
Yeah, and I've even, even looking at the property owners or the potential property owners, site plan, we've even, even at my office, tried to skin it a couple of different ways, and just based on the zoning, it's been pretty difficult to try to make that all work.
Is that lot next to it for sale at all, or not?
That I don't know.
Well, that's getting one down.
Yeah. It's going to be tracked.
I don't know, one time they said...
Is it developable lot yet? That's in between, I mean, are we going to...
There's something jogging my memory about that lot, there's, for some reason, it's not developable or...
Yeah, I think it was, it was purchased in the tax auction, I want to say.
By the city?
No, no. By another individual. But, but I think there's not, it could be developable. That was a lot, where the toy company wanted to build.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, several years ago.
Any motion to approve this?
Yeah, you would.
Well, I make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second.
So we're done with that, now we're going back to old business?
Yes, we're going for a vote.
Oh, I keep forgetting that part. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then we're good. Okay, now we can go to old business. 2016 goals and priorities. Well, I think we can, on the agenda, we have items A and C, A is the goals and priorities, and C is the zoning ordinance audit, those two are kind of tied together, so if I may make a suggestion, it would be to, let's, let's talk about that in conjunction with the audit, because the purpose of the audit was to, you know, maybe come up with some ideas for things in the ordinance that we could take a look at, a look at that need to be adjusted. And that could be a fairly lengthy discussion, potentially for the audits, you know, seven or eight pages or so. And so since we're talking about the amendment to the zoning ordinance that deals with the floodplain in this new district, we could deal with that first, and then talk about items A and C sort of in conjunction with one another. So where should we start?
Well, for the, for the, do you want to talk about the floodplain in River's Edge zoning amendment, or do you want to talk about the audit and the goals and priorities? I would suggest that we talk about the River's Edge amendment, since there's a public hearing for that, and since there's a public here to talk about it, I think we can go over that, then tackle the audit and the goals and priorities after that. That's my suggestion, anyway.
Okay, start with River's Edge.
Okay. So there is, you guys should have received a map, it looks like this, and I'll put it up on the screen here in a second. Then there's a draft zoning ordinance amendment dated for 2016 that you should have gotten with your packets. So if you guys recall, at the last meeting, we had some discussion about how to deal with this sort of conflict in zoning ordinance, and how to, how to deal with the floodplain, which is an overlay, but it wasn't shown as an overlay, and so we eventually decided to come up with a new zoning district to address a lot of the concerns that were brought forward from the public, making sure that we're, you know, doing something that makes sense for them, and not encouraging too much development in the floodplain, so that's what we did. I'm going to get on the screen here in a minute. Do I need to be on H D M I? You know which cable for you?
I have you on H D M I.
Oh, there it is. Okay, so the map up on the screen here, there's one in the back of the room, you know the sun's kind of in the way for some of you guys. So what we did is we adjusted the map, so this, on the, on the southern portion of the city, there's this turquoise looking color. That's everything that would be zoned, River's Edge is what we came up with for a name. And if you recall, before, I had suggested we just change all of those to a more conventional district like industrial, or R3, or R2, or suburban, or something. But because there was, you know, there was a fair amount of attention paid to this, just because it seemed like we were encouraging or wanting a lot of development in areas that frankly can't handle, that are underwater, you know, significant portion of the year, some of them may still be underwater right now, I don't know. And so from that sense, it made sense to kind of dial that back a bit, and come up with almost a replacement for what was the floodplain district on the old map. So this, this River's Edge district accomplishes that, and so I'll walk through sort of the parts of the text part of the ordinance that incorporates that into the zoning ordinance as a standalone district. So in the written portion of the amendment that you have, I'm just going to walk through this sort of section by section. A lot of this is just a very basic thing, it just adds the words RE, River's Edge District to various places in the ordinance. So for example, in section one, this is just a part of the zoning ordinance that just lists all of the names of the districts, so we just add this one to the end of the list. That's a very simple change. In section two of the amendment is the addition of item G, and we talked about this before, adding the removal of processing of topsoil, stone, rock, gravel, sand, gravel, lime, and other mineral material resources as a special land use in the industrial district. And we talked about also sections three and four, which is all the changes to the floodplain overlay, which sort of clears up that language and clarifies what's permitted, and under what, what circumstances and things like that. And that also continues on into section five, again, this is, this is all the same stuff that we've been talking about for the last couple of months here. Section six, which is on the top of the fourth page, I believe, of the amendment, is all of the new stuff. So this would be a brand-new chapter of the zoning ordinance, chapter 14A, called River's Edge District, and there's a purpose and intent statement, and then we have a fairly short list of uses that would be permitted, and then special name uses. And so permitted in that district would only be open space things, such as farms, nature use, parks, playgrounds, nature preserves, golf courses, horse trails, natural trails, so on and so forth, provided that no alterations may to the existing level of the floodplain or the direction of the structure which may interfere with the flow of the river or floodplain capacity. That's language that's right out of the ordinance currently for the floodplain district. So again, we're not really changing anything here, we're, I basically copied that language because it worked. Item B, again, accessory buildings and uses, so if someone wants to build maybe a small shed someplace on part of their property, I don't see that as being a big deal, it's not something that's going to house people or be used for any kind of residential or living purposes, so if there's a small barn or something like that, I was okay with that. Then also, again, this is also consistent with the language from the existing floodplain district, and it also allows for mining, or the, again, this is a removal and processing of topsoil, stone, rock, sand, gravel, and so forth, as a special name use only. So if we're talking about the Grand Rapids gravel site, or there's an existing, existing operation on the southeast part of the city, this would sort of continue that in its current configuration. 14A.04 is probably not going to apply a whole lot, just because there's not going to be many buildings, if any, but...
Andy, does that even have to be in there?
Well...
Or is it strictly for the accessory?
Well, since we talked about accessory buildings, and there can be some structures associated with the stuff that's permitted, so I thought about that too, I thought maybe we just get rid of any setbacks altogether, but we kept them fairly minimal, 30-foot front yard, 20-foot side, 35-foot rear. Minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet, minimum lot width of 125 feet. I think everything would be conforming, so we're not creating any sort of non-conforming parcels where we have something that would be made illegal by us doing this. And then under section 14A.05, on the top of the next page, this is more of that sort of floodplain stuff, where we talk about it, in subsection A, it says that development permitted by the two previous sections should only be permitted in accordance with requirements of this chapter, including all applicable overlay districts, which in this case could be the actual floodplain, so those standards would get pulled in with anything that happens here. And then I just have a couple of, you know, pretty straightforward items here to talk about. Item, under A1, if there's any, if somebody wants to develop anything, they might have to go to DQ, for example, because of the floodplain situation. And also under number two, I thought it was important to specify that anything that does get constructed, no matter what it is, must be designed, so it doesn't reduce the overall capacity of the floodplain. So by building something here, you're not raising the water level at some other location. Section seven of this amendment, again, we talked about this before, this just, we made one adjustment here, that would just require that an applicant submit some sort of a general reclamation plan or end-use plan, if you will, with regard to a mining operation. And there was one other change here as well that we, that we made, that talked about, where was it? I think it was under item, item 14, we're talking about the planning commission able to require environmental impact, engineering data, or other information. So again, this is all stuff that we've talked about a couple times already, everyone's pretty comfortable with that, I think.
And that would help for any well type of stuff that they want to check, right?
Yeah, so if somebody were to come in with a mining application, if you, if you will, this gives the planning commission a fair amount of latitude in requiring any additional information that would be necessary to properly evaluate what they're going to be doing. So if it's groundwater type data, you know, concerned about, you know, dewatering maybe, that happens with some of these, although not a lot. Any other possible impacts on the water table as far as quantity affecting any residential wells or anything like that, and pretty much anything else that would come into play. Mining operations can have, you know, a fairly notable impact, so hauling routes for trucks full of gravel and stuff like that, you know, we could designate those. If we're concerned about traffic, we can ask for traffic impact studies, for example. So this gives the planning commission a fair amount of latitude to ask for whatever deemed necessary. From section eight, again, this is just incorporating this River's Edge District into all the other spots of the ordinance where we specifically list zoning districts. So this is the site plan review chapter, chapter 18, we're adding River's Edge District to the enumeration of districts there. In section nine of this amendment, we just add that the same types of signs are permitted in the suburban residential R1, R2, R3, and Mobile Home Park districts, would be the same types of signs that would be permitted in the RE district. So the only change here is that I added the ANRE at the very end of that item A. Section 10, which I believe is the last substantive section of this amendment, is the actual change to the map. And so this is just a big table that shows a permanent parcel ID number, address, the current zoning, and then the proposed zoning. For most of them, it's going to, from floodplain to River's Edge, and you'll see a few of these, it says from, you know, General Industrial, or, sorry, you know, to General Industrial and River's Edge, or to R3 and River's Edge. In those cases, those parcels would be sort of split zones, so a part of it would be zoned suburban residential R3 or whatever, and then the part of it that's within the floodplain, or the part of it that's within the floodway would be zoned River's Edge. And so I can explain why some of the lines are where they are for those reasons. So if you look at this Grand Rapids gravel property here on the southwest part of the city, which you can see my, the mouse right here, this line is where it is because this is the boundary, placed at the best of my knowledge, of the floodway, which is different from the floodplain. So the floodway, as I understand it, is kind of the area where there's actually generally moving water, there's current, right? Whereas the floodplain is just kind of a spill-over area where it's not really moving as much. Similarly, I tried to follow parcel lines as much as I could, but it doesn't always work, so you'll see up here, we cut across, there's kind of a trapezoid looking thing here, but we do cut across the front part of this property here for the same reason, we're following this floodway right here. And then we do it again over here, this is the actual location of the floodway, so I follow that right here along this particular boundary on the map. The other ones, a bunch of... The other ones, a bunch of these are owned by the city. I think this one and maybe, no, not that one. I think this one here is owned by the city. And a lot of them are zoned floodplain already. So we're not really changing much of anything other than it makes the whole ordinance work if they don't have a bunch of conflicts built into it.
Andy?
Yeah?
On the copy that I got versus the newspaper copy, the second property that is listed as R3 multiple family residential and F1 floodplain before, and now it's only listed as RE Rivers Edge, I'm lying. It's the second property on the list. Eight twelve Bowes Road. Yeah, that one I believe is right. I didn't quite understand why.
I think it's right here.
Multiple family residential, if that's what they were.
In the letter I received, it does still list that.
Well, that's my question. I don't know if I just left off in the copy we got here or, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there were a couple after, after the letters were sent out and after it was published in the paper, there were a couple of calls that we got where the people had asked us to change it, basically. I think this one here, I think on the existing map, if I recall correctly, the floodplain just kind of cuts arbitrarily right through the middle of the property. And so I suppose we could change it back. I don't, there's not really a good, pretty much this entire thing is within that floodway again, except for a tiny little sliver of it. And so again, in the interest of keeping things simple, I just put the whole thing in that Rivers Edge District. We could put it back.
Well, I would just be concerned, I would be concerned that if it's a multiple family and they would be nonconforming if they had a multiple family there. So I don't want to make them nonconforming.
Right. I think that parcel is currently vacant, if I recall correctly.
Which one is that, eight thirteen?
It's eight twelve Bowes. It's right, yeah, it's right here, if you can see on the screen. So it's corner right here. I'm virtually positive that's currently undeveloped. We could certainly take a look at that and make a change. But again, when I looked at this, the floodplain or the floodway occupied almost the entire thing. And so that's why I decided to make the whole thing in the RE district.
So are you proposing the Grand Rapids gravel place, to me, that's Rivers Edge?
It would be half and half.
Half?
Yes.
Because they have plans to possibly build...
Right.
After they're done.
Right. So because this amendment would allow mining as a special land use in both the industrial district and the Rivers Edge District, they would be allowed to do that activity on the whole parcel, which actually goes all the way up to Bowes Road. So they own basically all, there's a couple of little notches here, which I think they might have options on these two. But they own almost all of this property here with a few exceptions. There's a personal, there's a small parcel right here where the mouse is. And then there's a couple more over here right in this area. But the vast majority of this site, they own.
Andy, when I went out and met with those residents, they said that they pay rent to Grand Rapids gravel.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, they own already anyways. And I don't think, you know, it was a long time ago when I, you know, when I saw it from a very preliminary fashion, what they were thinking about doing. I don't think they were going to be, you know, digging really close to Bowes Road. But yeah, we do have plans for that site, and this enables that, it enables them to apply, doesn't enable them to necessarily do it. But it allows them to apply and go through the process, which I think we have to allow in this case. And so, yeah, that one's kind of awkward because it's one parcel that has two zoning districts on it, plus the overlay. But, you know, it is what it is. I guess we can make the whole thing one district, but I'd be more comfortable because part of that is out of the 100-year floodplain, it's out of the floodway, it's out of everything. It's high enough that you could just build on it normally. And so it doesn't make sense to zone the whole thing Rivers Edge, in my opinion, for that reason. However, because the part to the south is adjacent to the river, it is, it does get pretty low down there. I felt like it made sense to just follow the existing floodway that's there and that's been mapped out. So this is a public hearing, so...
Well, this is a public hearing.
Yes. And so we will need to open a hearing and solicit public comment.
So is your public hearing a comment now?
If you are so inclined, that would be fine.
Any comments here from you guys?
No, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Kathy from Mania, seven seventy-five Grand River. And I don't know, Andy had gotten a copy of my letter. I don't know if the rest of you have. Wonderful. I am requesting that my piece of property, which is right here, the zone, as we're talking about dividing the property in terms of the zoning, that right now it's all going to be zoned Rivers Edge. However, this portion up here used to have a house on it. It's never been flooded. It's the same level as the railroad tracks. It's the same, it's as dry as can be, and that's where we plan to build. I love the term Rivers Edge, incidentally. That's very nice. And obviously, this area right here is Rivers Edge. There's no question about it, but there's a tremendous difference in elevation. And I don't, and we can all sit here and agree on it, but if it isn't zoned, rezoned, you know, suburban residential, which is what I was told it was going to be when I purchased the property, at some time in the future, when we go to build, it may be different people in office, and maybe look and say, no, that doesn't conform with. So I'm really, I'm requesting that it be zoned, combination, I don't know if there are other properties on the list that are zoned as a combination of suburban residential and Rivers Edge. I said their loved ones lived there. The house, I remember the house burned about 25 years ago, but there was a house there for many years. Are there any questions?
No.
Andy, is that doable?
Yeah, I mean, in this case, the map, the official map from FEMA, which it's kind of hard to read, it's just this grayscale thing that I got online. The 100-year floodplain, there is kind of a goofy little jog in it right here. So right at the corner of where the railroad tracks are, there is a little spot where the 100-year floodplain sort of migrates to the north. So we should just be able to follow that boundary. And it would carve out, I mean, it'd be a fairly small area, but we could, you know, they're certainly in there.
It's about two and a half acres, we looked at it.
Yeah.
That's quite buildable, yes.
Yeah, I mean, if it's buildable, I think we can, we can probably...
Are there any other areas that are similar to that along that edge that other people own in?
The railroad owns the property here.
Okay.
This property here is actually lower in elevation than ours. This property, it does flood about even with the lower property that does flood. Actually, we're higher here than the gas company.
Is that where that one house fits today? Bowes, wherever that is?
We're south of the river.
No, the other way that you were talking about.
Oh, there's a house right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, right across from the fairgrounds. And they're actually much lower than, they are the same elevation as the lower portion of our property, but we wouldn't build there.
Nope.
This is, like I said, this is even with the railroad tracks. And we're higher than the gas company, which does flood sometimes.
Yeah.
So the only other areas where this sort of thing occurs are areas that aren't proposed to be zoned Rivers Edge. There's one directly across the street that's going to be zoned or isn't zoned industrial. And then way over on the, I guess, either southeast corner of the city, those two properties there, they're zoned suburban residential over here. You can see right here, they've got a little bit of that going on where the...
Which mouse, oh, can I change?
Yeah, sorry. It's kind of hard to see. Right here, yeah, you, so you can kind of see here, this area in the middle where there's not that green hatching over it, that's an area that's actually out of the floodplain. So because those aren't going to be zoned Rivers Edge, I think they're fine the way they are. But, yeah, we could certainly make that a combination, I think. You can sort of see there's this weird little line right here. This actually follows the contours of the railroad by itself. And so there's this weird little skinny island that pokes up above the 100-year floodplain, according to this map. But we could, yeah, we could kind of, you know, carve this out around, around the southeast portion of that property and make that work.
Yeah, southeast and southwest, both are dry as can be. We had the property when there was the nice flood and dry as can be.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Donovan, as we had a 226 South Jefferson, Mobile Division. So, you know, it's right, right around the corner, Jefferson in front. Just have a few questions. As I was reading through the letter, I didn't realize that it had been brought up before that. I see it's marked for public facilities to be built literally right across from where our home is, is what's on the newest map here. It's all here. On the map that we received, it's in blue, which would be for public facilities. My question is, what are you folks proposing on, I'm looking at this point, for a public facility there? And I'm sure they'll list it, I would think that it's been discussed.
Well, the, so far as I know, the change in zoning is because it was all zoned floodplain before, or part of it was zoned floodplain before, it's only zoned public facilities now because it's actually owned by the city. I'm not aware of any other plans to build anything there, but because it's a public property that's owned by the city, we zone it, I propose that we zone it to public facility.
All right. And the other question I had was on the multiple family residential area. This is the darker yellow here. On the map I was given, it's kind of yellow with green lines drawn through it. That was proposed to go to multi-family units. And as I was reading through the articles, 14A.01 was saying not intended for a human habitation, but then 14A.04, it gave the dimensions on if, I think, were to be built. But I was wondering, are they considering putting condos in this area section? Is that why that's being changed from single and dual residential to multi-residential?
I don't think there's actually a change necessarily proposed at the current time. The existing zoning for those parts that aren't within the floodplain now is already that, and so we're not proposing to change anything.
Okay, because what I was looking at, the same single or, or in what I received, it was saying this single family, and then it was changing to multi-residential on the letter that I received. If you look, public facility, Rivers Edge, and then on the south division, Parker, you're extension unit.
That's my property.
Okay. So the property that we're talking about here, this is 125 South Division? Okay. So previously, it was zoned a combination of floodplain and R3 residential. We had originally proposed to keep it the way it is with a slight adjustment in the actual boundary of where the Rivers Edge would be. So I guess if it previously, in your letter, it actually should have said that the existing zoning was both R3 and...
This is all R3 anyway?
Yes.
Correctly, right. So it hasn't, it hasn't changed, but in the paperwork I received.
Okay.
It was changing. So I was trying to figure out what was going on, their purpose behind.
There is no change proposed there.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then the only other question I had is on the mineral parts with the Rivers Edge. It seems to be all-inclusive. I know it's pretty much for Grand Rapids. Grap is, what I've heard, is the main topic for that being brought up. I don't mind a grapple in my house or in that area. Is there anything being proposed for this section at all at this point? And if it is, how far? You know, because it is city property, how are they going to be contracting that out? How far do they go? What their dollars are used for?
There is nothing proposed, to my knowledge, in any other location. There is nothing going on that I'm aware of. Dave, I don't know if you, I'm assuming there's...
No, the only thing that has happened over that section is Berry, Berry Brothers had a gravel mining area that is outside, Long Grand River, that's outside the city. But other than that, I mean, there's been nothing.
Okay.
Not even talking, just in generalities, there's been nothing.
Good.
All right, thank you. That was, those were my concerns. Thank you.
Revisiting this one for public record. The areas, it's an excellent, and 125 South Division. We were just discussing zoning changes, and we previously discussed making some of this area along with Long South Division here, suburban residential, to fit more with the space, you know, with the Rivers Edge and the space that's available there to use. We talked about that, it's pretty wrong, but record that we were requesting that be suburban residential and not R3.
I have had no problem with that. He's talking about there's this kind of odd-shaped piece. It's fairly large. Again, if you can see the cursor here, the mouse. It starts, the southern boundary is right along here, then it goes all the way up here, and then it wraps around these three parcels and actually has frontage on division up here. So basically, with his, he would accept his suggestion here, this part of that parcel here that's not in Rivers Edge would become R3, which is...
No, it's River.
I'm sorry, suburban residential. We just, just as northern part of that right here, the rest of it would be left alone.
We'd like to accommodate them if we can.
Andy, I wouldn't change all, everybody's gonna use it all, just for better suit, the way it is being used currently.
Or just double their taxes, or... Only if you put a building on it. I'm good with that.
Me, too. Thank you.
I did receive a letter in the mail, too. If you'd like me to read it.
Sure.
This is from Todd Wood, 925 South Hudson. He's on the south side of Grand River. Last summer, I undertook a considerable renovation of the exterior of the house and decks. Moving forward, I plan to continue to make improvements to the grounds and property. There is limited space available for building on this low-lying, long, narrow, six-acre parcel. I have plans to add an equipment storage building, and I'm currently considering a garden greenhouse, possibly a small artist studio space. The previous owner had thrown lots of debris into the woods over the years. I have been steadily cleaning, working on cleaning it up, removing large quantities of metal and general refuse from the property. Many thanks to the Boy Scouts and the annual Lowell cleanup. This property is fully tasked as a city of Lowell property, yet the property does not receive any city water or sewer services. I would ask for leniency and that any zoning change of this property would allow these ongoing residential improvements.
Where is that, Adam Hudson's?
Andy. Thinking it's, is it this one right here? I'm assuming this long skinny one, I don't know for sure.
Cross from the boat launch.
Oh, cross from the boat launch.
It comes off next between the railroad tracks and then the river.
So he's south of the tracks?
It's north of the tracks.
Okay, just off of Hudson Street.
There's already a house there, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So is that, it's got to be this one right here, right? Because this is Hudson Street, so there's only one parcel that's right here. So it's got to be this one, I think. And so to accommodate that, we could make it SR, suburban residential, that permits residential uses. That would be a little bit of a deviation. Previously, that was zoned floodplain, so that was, there's a home there, that would have been illegal, nonconforming use, and, which is fine, it could continue, but that hamstrings you a little bit when you want to do improvements, expansions, things like that.
So anything he builds would have to be conformant to that?
Well, it would, as it stands right now, he wouldn't necessarily be able to do anything. If you wanted to make it expanded, he might not be able to do that at all.
I think he's the next parcel. I think he's the next parcel up. There's a little sliver in between, he's the next parcel, because he's right across where the river dumps in. Yeah, that's gonna be this parcel there.
This one right here?
Ninety-five percent sure.
Is that the one that's got the greenhouse, Greg?
I don't think so. There's a little garage and a house, and when the water came up, it never got to his place, it got close. But I think somebody else owns that little piece, because he actually follows the tracks in for 150 yards.
Then it is that. I thought he already had a couple buildings on his property, garage and some other things, so I'm not sure how many more buildings he can build.
Yeah, I don't know either, if you're talking about accessory buildings, you get two. But if it's a greenhouse, and if he's allowed a farm, then that might be a little bit different, without getting too far in that conversation.
I mean, if we could change it to accommodate it, but still...
Yeah, I mean, if we change it to suburban residential, it would allow for the ag type uses, it would allow for a residence. He's still obviously within the floodplain, so all the requirements of the overlay would still be in place.
Please don't be able to improve it something. So I'm either, any other letters or anything? That's it?
That was it.
Any other comments? So we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Motion to close it?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay.
Comfortable?
A vote yes, everybody yes?
Yes.
Yes.
At this point, we can, and you can recommend approval to council with these changes? If you want to wait for a month and take one last look at it, and take one final look at the map before you recommend approval, you can do that too, that's up to you.
I think we can make our approval.
I'll make a motion to accept this, whether changes, to move it forward to the council.
I'll second.
Okay, everybody, very yes.
Yes.
No's? They'll be brought to the city council, down to the city council.
Yep.
Our next meeting is a week from today, which should be May 16th.
Okay.
Alright. Zoning ordinance out of... Those I go through with us. As part of our discussion into goals and objectives for 2016, so on that list, just to jump back there real quick, there's nine items on it. A bunch of them have to do with zoning stuff. Maximum building height, review districts and setbacks, look at lesson setbacks in the historic districts, lot coverage standards, considering accessory dwellings in certain districts, so like a detached building that would have a dwelling in it, or maybe a second dwelling on a property that would be accessory to the primary dwelling. Requirements for parking spaces, what is considered a hard surface. These are all zoning ordinance questions, and we have things in the zoning ordinance now to deal with these in some manner or another. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't actually review it once in a while. So a couple of months ago, I suggested that I just go through the entire ordinance, basically, just highlight a whole bunch of questions, potential conflicts, issues, concerns, things that, from my experience and Sue's experience, were, things that maybe don't work so well as we've, you know, administered this thing in the real world over the last several years. So, I think I went through this a little bit with you guys last time, but I'll do it. You know, we'll go through it again briefly, just we're all on the same page here, because it's a pretty big document, and I don't... I don't expect that you've all sat around and like memorized this thing cover to cover over the last month. I haven't done that yet, and I've been, you know, here for several years now, so, I'm getting close, I'm getting close. So just kind of, to walk through each of the districts and what the purpose of them is, starting with the definitions. It's the first really substantive chapter of the zoning ordinance, that is, pretty much is what it is. It defines every key term in the ordinance, what it means, and also tells us how to measure setbacks, how to tell which lot line is the front lot line, how to tell which one is the side lot line. I think you get into these unusual circumstances where you have a corner lot, and then there's two technically front lot lines, and there are special circumstances that deals... or there's special language in the ordinance that deals with those unique circumstances. If you have frontage on water, then your back, the sideline of the water is actually the front, and the side that's adjacent to the street is the back, so it flips. There's all these goofy little things in the ordinance that deal with these special conditions. And so that's really why the definitions are important. For that reason, it tells us how to measure everything, and then two, it eliminates a lot of confusion about what, you know, what something actually is. For example, if we don't have a definition for something that's clearly permitted, so if we don't have a definition for a gas station, or for a restaurant, if there's some sort of disagreement between, you know, what that is between us and an applicant, this settles that argument for us. Without this, it becomes a lot more difficult, and then, you know, again, that's when we get into these, you know, issues where you can end up in court trying to defend something, your ordinance is incomplete. This settles a lot of those arguments before they even start. And so that's why definitions are one of the most important chapters of the zoning ordinance, even if it's not the most interesting part of the ordinance. A few just general comments, there are instances in here where the definitions refer to something called the City Zoning Act, or the City or Village Zoning Act, that's something that was around a while, it was replaced in 2006 with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which, you know, takes care of everything, counties, townships, cities and villages. Before, there were separate acts for all of these things, this act combined them all into one. So this is just a simple matter of updating the legislation that's being referenced. Kind of scattered throughout the definitions chapter, there are a bunch of terms that deal with adult businesses. And again, this is not changing anything, it's just consolidating them into one place. A lot of the terms in here, especially when we're talking about measuring things, should have graphics. So instead of writing out what a front yard is, a picture would help, a nice clear, you know, large, easy to understand diagram. Same thing with describing the different kinds of lots, so corner lots, interior lots, through lots, divided lots, waterfront lots, all these different kind of lots, and all these different kind of conditions can be very easily explained with a simple diagram or a picture, instead of having two paragraphs of text to try to say the same thing. A lot of the definitions just need to be, we just need to add a lot of definitions. There are many instances where there are terms in the ordinance that just don't have a definition. So, and again, that's something, getting back to that, to my previous comment about everybody agreeing on what, you know, a car wash is. If it's defined, we'll know what it is, so every key term, every permitted land use should be defined in our ordinance. The definitions for daycares, adult foster cares, all those sort of state licensed residential care facilities, as they call them, should be defined such that they are consistent with how the state defines them currently. Right now, there are some differences between the terminology and then the number of people that would be allowed, and where you can permit them, and where you can't permit them, or where you have to permit them. There's a bunch of special rules that apply to all of that stuff. Number five, the definition of farm, simple change, just make it so it's the exact same thing as what the RAC and Farm Act says. And again, some of the things we should, again, we should just look at and sort of just consider. You know, one of the things that we've run into quite a bit is talking about how we define lot lines, which again, really dry, uninteresting planning and zoning stuff. But there was like, three paragraphs of text that talk about front lot lines, how you measure them, how you tell the difference between what they call a primary front lot line and a secondary, if there's a corner lot. This just says that the shorter of the two is the primary front lot line. Regardless of where the person's driveway is, or how their house is oriented, it just says the shorter one is always the front. Well, that doesn't always make sense, in my opinion. So that's just something that we should look at, and knowing what we know about the city, you know, we should be able to come up with maybe a more flexible answer to that question. So having to just say, okay, this line is two feet shorter than this line, that makes a big difference with regard to setbacks and that kind of thing.
Yeah, that would help me in my life, if we live on a corner, sometimes I call the front the back and back the front, so... You got three entry doors, it's to the front.
Jim, you're gonna lose that argument, you know.
Oh, I know.
Check for general provisions, these are just regulations that generally apply to most every property in the city. So it's just kind of all of the stuff that doesn't, that's not tied to a specific process or a specific zoning district, ends up in general provisions. So, non-conformities, lighting, pools, driveways, all kinds of stuff like that is all part of this general provisions chapter. Fences, under this first section one here, there's a section of ordinance that seems to prevent something called privacy screens. I don't know what that means exactly, or how it's different from a fence, and it seems to prohibit someone from rebuilding a section of a six foot tall privacy fence. Those are fairly common, I'm sure a bunch of you have them in your backyards currently. And so, it's confusing language, it doesn't really help property owners. And if you have a privacy fence that's six feet tall to keep your dog in your yard, it doesn't make sense for the ordinance to require a two foot gap in it every so often, which it currently does. I'm not sure why that's there, but that's one of those things that I've read it a few times and kind of, huh, that's weird, I wonder why that's there. There's a section that talks about temporary uses and activities. And we've talked about this a few years ago, where there are temporary sales and things that go on, you know, the fireworks, folks that will be hearing from probably in another month or so. You know, they have, currently, if you want to do something like that, even if it's only for a month out of there, you have to come in front of the planning permission, go through a special name use permit to establish a very temporary sales activity. I don't know how much sense that makes, I kind of prefer that stuff be handled administratively instead of going through that long process or something that's gonna last for two months. So that's something that we could take a look at. There's a section that talks about home occupations. And so, currently what's in there is fine, except that, again, this is something that's in the zoning enabling act. It says that the instruction of a fine art or craft within any dwelling is permitted, whether or not you want it to be or not, so, you never know, a lot of people who have a problem with someone, you know, teaching dance or piano lessons or something in their house, but you have to permit it, no matter what. You know, the act says so, so we should revise that, just so we're being consistent with the state law. There's a section 4.13 that deals with non-conforming uses. Again, that's just something I want to clarify, so everybody understands the difference between non-conforming use or non-conforming building, or non-conforming lot. You know, if we got into writing something like that, I would just want to clarify it, so it's very... It's easy for everybody to understand what the situations are when they apply, and we have some reasonable standards in there to allow for the continuation of a non-conforming building or non-conforming use, but also accomplish our goal of trying to eventually get rid of them over time. A couple more things here. There are some areas of the general provisions where there's just similar language that's scattered around in different sections, I would just want to consolidate. Under item five, the section 4.13A is one of those areas where we could combine it with language from a different section. 4.19 talks about the keeping of animals. Again, I don't know that we need to change anything, but that's something that people are talking about a lot these days. A lot of people want to have six chickens or whatever. And so, whether or not we change it, I don't know, but it's something that we could at least talk about. Checkers five through sixteen, which are the next twelve, and hopefully after next week, we'll have actually one more district in there, which would be the P River's Edge District. Those are all the district standards that contain all, that tell you what you can do, and what the setbacks are, and which uses are allowed by right or by special land use in every district of the city. The biggest comment that I have in this, in this general area is that there's a lot of inconsistency in the language, so it'll use different terms in different sections to describe the same thing. And then sometimes, we can go back to the definition to look for the definition for that term. It's either not there, or it's defined under a different term again. So again, it just breeds confusion, which I'm not a big fan of, obviously. Sometimes I think it's better to be a little more general in this area, so instead of listing out schools, churches, libraries, and community center buildings, maybe we just call that institutional uses, or something like that, so we're, we have a fairly general term that allows for a wide variety of things that we can kind of, you know... Yeah, we can kind of group them, because currently, if we have a school, a church, library, or a community center, well, what if, I don't know, I mean, what if there's a museum, or something that's not technically one of those four things, but it's pretty darn close? If it all listed out, school, church, library, or community center, we can't really...
They have limits, everything.
Yeah, you're totally limited to what you can put there. If you have something a little more general, it gives us the discretion to use some common sense, and apply that standard appropriately. The residential care stuff, I touched on a little bit already. For, daycares are pretty popular, a lot of people have them in their homes. If there are fewer than six children, they don't even need to come here, and you can't, they're allowed by right in any residential zone in the city, and that's in the state law. If there are more than six children, if there are seven to twelve, then you can limit them if you want to. But even, there's restrictions as far as what you can do with that as well. Same thing with the adult foster care, adult daycare, all those sorts of facilities. It gets really confusing as far as what they are, and which is which. There's adult foster care, family homes, small group home, medium group homes, large group homes, congregate facilities, there's assisted living facilities, there's nursing home. I mean, it's a long list, and it gets very confusing, and so that's something that I want to clarify, just so we all understand what they are, where they're permitted, where they're not, and things of that nature. Another issue that we've run into several times over the past few years is that, in all of the zoning districts, there's a table that has what the setbacks are, then there's, and then there's something there that just says lot coverage, and then it gives you a percent, like lot coverage, sixty percent. And the question, but I always have is, okay, well, is that a minimum standard? Is that a maximum standard? Does it have to be exactly, I don't know, it doesn't say what, if that's a maximum standard. Typically, it is a maximum standard, so you're preserving some permeable surface on site, but it's not clear. So that's just a small change that I would want to make, that would really help specify exactly what we're talking about here, and what the actual standard is. Again, sometimes that lot cover standard includes building and parking lots, which means that in your commercial zone, it's gonna be pretty tough to meet a sixty percent lot coverage. If it's a maximum lot cover standard of sixty percent, that can be pretty difficult for someone to meet if they wanted to put a building on their site and then have to pay for the parking lot. Probably not forty percent of that parcel left over to leave totally unused and porous. So that's something that we should review and talk about, or should be reviewed and talked about. Again, with the industrial districts, again, some of those requirements are too specific and too complicated.
Are some of those also driven by the size of the buildings? Because we talked about this before, that if the main building is this, you can only do a building so much larger on that lot anyway? So, are there some of that?
There is some, yeah, we talked about that with regard to the accessory buildings.
Right.
So in the commercial district, we decided that your accessory building can't be larger than your principal building. And that does limit that, but if we're specifically including the parking lot, then we're essentially, I mean, that's gonna require that most parcels have a lock coverage of greater than sixty percent. And we ran into this when the gas station out here at the corner came in for a review. They had to get a whole bunch of variances because they had to pay the whole darn thing. I mean, you have a ninety-eight percent lock coverage. Yeah, yeah, VP. Because they bought an extra parcel or two right at the car wash over there. And so, yeah, it was just, it was impossible for them to meet that standard. And even if we had, even if they had met it, then we would have forty percent of their parcel would basically be useless. And so in that instance, in these more urban areas like where we are right now, that kind of standard, I don't think makes a lot of sense. So that's something that we should be thinking about revising. Item six is kind of the same comment that I had before where we have too much specificity as far as what's permitted. We don't need to say the manufacturer, compounding, assembly, or treatment of articles from the previously prepared materials of aluminum bones, silicon, canvas, cork, and so on and so forth. We can just say a manufacturing and processing facility. And that would encompass all of that stuff plus any little outliers that might be there as well.
We've cut this stuff in half almost, huh?
In some instances, yeah, you can really simplify it a lot. And from an administration standpoint, it helps. And for the public, it helps too, if they, you know, go cross-eyed reading this stuff a few times. And this helps it put it in a little bit simpler language to tend to work. There are a few just kind of odd regulations in here. Section thirteen oh three B, which is one of the industrial zones, I think, says that petroleum storage at least five hundred feet from a residential zone property. I don't know what that means. I don't know if that means that there is no part of any development that involves petroleum storage. Would have to be five hundred feet from a residential zone property. I mean, technically, we're all storing petroleum in some capacity or another. In our homes, probably, if we have a, you know, a gas tank or a gas can of some sort, which most of us do probably. So again, there's these little things that kind of, if taken literally and applied strictly, it can be very limiting, very confusing. And those are some of the things that I'd like to.
So you can say if it's over this amount, then you need to keep with that. If it's on there, you could store it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent obviously is if there's an industrial property that's storing a large amount, you know, gasoline or something, or the gas station perhaps. I don't know if that was the intent, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, but. Yeah, those are the instances where we have to take, like, let's say if it's, maybe we say if it's, if the primary activity involves this, or if you're storing more than X number of gallons, you know, five hundred or a thousand gallons, I don't know. If you're storing more than some number of gallons, maybe that's what it is. Then that standard would kick in. But we have to make sure that we have a good reason for why we're regulating something the way that we are instead of just making it up as we go. In chapter fifteen, it's, again, it's a little confusing. The title of it, it's called a planned unit development district, which suggests that a PUD is a rezoning, which is fine, a lot of places do that. But the language of the ordinance seems to suggest that it simply goes through a special land use review and approval process. That approach is okay too, but if that's the case, then we shouldn't be calling it a planned unit development district because we're actually changing the zoning of the property. Either way, it's fine whether PUD is handled as a rezoning or as a special land use. Both are perfectly acceptable. But in this case, the ordinance needs to pick one and then go with it, whether it's a rezoning or not.
Right now Highland Hills is a PUD district.
Right. So that approach is, the biggest difference between dealing with a planned unit development as a rezoning is that a rezoning would allow for a write-off referendum. So if the public, there's a big outcry for some reason, public didn't want them to be in the PUD.
We had it for Highland Hills.
Okay, so they could force it to go to referendum and then, you know, load it up or down at the next election. If it's a special land use, that option is available. If someone doesn't like it, then they just drag the city to circuit court and, you know, ballot it out there. That's the biggest difference. The process is a little bit different as well. But from a overall big picture standpoint, that's probably the most notable difference between the two ways of doing it. So the public facilities district is generally fine, except for that some of the setbacks don't work. I think even where we're sitting currently, City Hall, there's, there are, you know, twenty-foot setbacks for front lot lines and stuff for everything is on public facilities, where this building is on public facilities and it's obviously not setback twenty feet from the street. I'm not saying there shouldn't be, but it is. And so the ordinance needs to be flexible enough to allow for, you know, for that kind of thing. There's a few more sections here I'm going to go through with you guys. Under special land uses, there are approval criteria. So when we look at special land use, we apply several fairly hard standards and see if that, if the proposed use actually meets those standards. I think those could be strengthened a little bit. There are, there's some additional language we could add to that section to just address some more situations like if somebody abandons a special land use, what happens? Is there a process for being able to revoke special land use if they're not operating in a manner consistent with their approval? Do they expire? All those kinds of things aren't really dealt with in that chapter and they should be dealt with in that chapter. And then in chapter seventeen A, there's a fairly long chapter that regulates adult businesses in the city. It's fine, but since they're permitted, I believe, as special land uses, I think we should just move them into chapter seventeen. So that's just more organizational thing. Chapter nineteen, we've spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of years talking about parking. I know some of you have seen the parking study that we did last year. And I think it started actually a couple of years ago. And we just did a presentation a few months ago at the DVA where we went over, we literally count here county parking spaces all over the place and every public parking lot on the street, all over the place in the city. And so one of the things that we can talk about is making sure that we're not requiring more parking than we need, that there's enough flexibility built in, especially around the downtown, so that there's adequate parking, but we're not, you know, forcing people to, you know, knock down buildings or, you know, build smaller buildings or, you know, build things that aren't particularly fitting with this fabric down here. The biggest thing is probably quantity, making sure that we're not requiring too much or too little. There's some flexibility built in there. We have some of that currently, but overall, I think it could be reviewed. And then also, there's some discussion we had last year about what we consider a hard surface. There's a standard in there that says that every parking lot must be paved with asphalt, concrete, or some other hard surface approved by the planning commission. And so thinking about, well, what does that mean? And would gravel be okay or would, you know, crushed asphalt be okay or some other material be okay? I don't know, but we should think about, you know, what some of those materials might be, if we should encourage them. If we specifically don't want dirt or gravel, then we should probably say so. Just, you know, just kind of work through that, that whole chapter might be something that would be beneficial. There are also some landscaping standards in the parking chapter where if you have more than twelve spaces in your parking lot, then you have to build an island, like low landscaped island, either within the lot or around the perimeter. So there's, so you don't have just acres and acres of asphalt. You know, there's some trees breaking up to landscape a little bit. And one thing that we've run into a couple of times a few years ago was that if somebody just wants to basically, you know, tear up their current parking lot and put it right back the way that they are, or, and they want to put it back, yeah, the way that it was. If they, if you make them comply with this, then they're losing, you know, potentially ten or fifteen or twenty spots just from putting in landscaping grounds. And there's additional setbacks built in. And those are all things that we should be considering in those, how to deal with some of those more unique situations where we don't want to take away parking that's currently there and fill it with landscaping. But at the same time, we don't, if someone's building a brand new one, maybe we want the trees. But if they're redeveloping or repaving, maybe there's an exception built in there, I don't know. But that's something that we could talk about moving forward. And as a general note, I like flexibility with parking. A lot of times the applicant knows better than we do how much parking they're going to need. And so sometimes I think it makes sense to allow a lot of flexibilities. We can work with people and make sure that there's a common sense solution that we can all live with when it comes to parking. Chapter twenty was just rewritten a few years ago. Unfortunately, at some point, we may have to write it again because last year there was a Supreme Court decision called the B V Town of Gilbert, or the Supreme Court said that any content-based sign regulations are unconstitutional because you're regulating free speech. And from what I learned, the rule of thumb there is that if you have to read the sign to tell what kind of sign it is, then that is a content-based regulation and you shouldn't have that. So for example, zoning ordinance probably talks about, actually, NOAA talks about political signs, real estate signs, construction signs. Those are all signs that you don't know what kind of sign it is until you actually look at it and read what it says. So we have to be careful. We don't have to, you know, throw it all out and start over, but we should, at some point, it should be revisited. And in the meantime, we'll have to be careful with how that's administered because we don't want to get into a situation, obviously, where we're doing something that the Supreme Court said we can't do. Last couple of chapters, zoning board of appeals. There's just some general expansion of the text that should go on there, just so it more clearly defines their role, you know, what their powers are, maybe expand or review the variance criteria a little bit. Things like that, I think, would help that section a little bit. Chapter twenty-two, again, this is a general administration of the ordinance. It should be expanded to address how we conduct public hearings, how we notice public hearings, the planning commission, how you amend the ordinance, what criteria we use to make those decisions and things like that. Last couple of sections, chapter twenty-three, I just, I don't, I'm not a big fan of the written out legal description version of zoned properties. That's not really used anymore because we have maps and GIS and all of that and addresses and parcel numbers. So we just do that instead of writing out the legal description for what the zoning districts are. And then chapter twenty-four is something that I would suggest it's fine more or less the way it is, but we just want to move it somewhere else because it's kind of out of place being tacked on at the end. And so someone might have a hard time finding it. So I know there's a lot of information here. It's kind of dry, but it's also really important as far as how we regulate and how we deal with property owners in the city. Make sure that they're, and that we're treating everybody fairly and we're giving everyone a reasonable chance to do what they want with their property within reason and things like that. So this was, again, this was written in light of the goals and priorities. So I don't know if this helps you guys think about what parts of the ordinance you would want to look at? If you have anything that's kind of coming into your mind as you think about these things. You know, we can tackle any of this, we can tackle all of it, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter. But that's.
Should we go through a couple of sections?
Yeah, I was just thinking, how much time, if you were to look at chapter two definitions, how much time would you want to spend on that? Is it a twenty-minute session, is it a half an hour? As we, as we, you know, plan our meetings future, so that maybe next agenda, we cover this and it's a good twenty-minute session? You have time to prepare for it?
Yeah, well, I think it depends on what the goal is at the end of the day. I mean, if we want to actually rewrite this stuff, for every part that we change in order for it to become official, we have to do a public hearing.
So we actually have to add a section and do a public hearing for everyone.
Yeah, well, or, I mean, that's one way to do it. I mean, the other, the other options would be to just take on the whole ordinance at once and work through it, you know, in chapter by chapter over the next probably year or more. If you don't want to do that much, because that, I mean, I'm not gonna lie, that's gonna be expensive. The other thing that you could do, if there's one section that's, you think needs attention right now for something you're concerned about, maybe it's parking. I mean, honestly, getting this floodplain thing taken care of is a huge, huge accomplishment for this ordinance as far as I'm concerned. But if there are, maybe it's non-conformities, maybe it's, maybe you're concerned about the setbacks because some of them don't make sense, maybe there are persons with those standards that you wouldn't want to look at. We can just take one chapter, kind of like the city did with signs back in two thousand twelve. They said, you know, let's just look at signs, get it fixed, get it right. You can drop that in there pretty seamlessly without having to mess with the rest of the document too much. The issue is if we decide to go with just definitions in order to make it work, it's gonna have this effect of, this domino effect or the butterfly effect of affecting almost every other chapter of the ordinance anyways to make the language consistent. So it's totally up to you. I mean, I'd be happy to work on the entire thing, but that, just so you know, that would be a long, I mean.
You're getting very tired, aren't you?
Oh, no, I mean, typically that takes like, I mean, that's like a year-long process or more.
Oh, yeah.
It's not something that we just do in a couple of months usually. I mean, I got one done and what I thought was great next speed. Last fall and it was like, well, it's not actually adopted yet, but it's complete and it's been six or seven months. And that was like blatant fast.
Dave, do you have any suggestions as our leader of what you'd like to see us accomplish where there might be weak spots today?
I don't know necessarily there are weak spots. There would need to be, there's some clarifications that are needed. I would say that another way to look at it, instead of trying to do one section or all of it, is maybe to take a quarter of it or something like that and then eventually bring it to a public hearing to go over it. But, you know, that's the way I would look at it. I don't think that there's anything, you know, there needs to be changes, but it isn't overwhelming, at least my opinion.
Okay, that's fine.
Couple of thoughts that would come to me is that our, our goals and priorities, the first one is a master plan due in two thousand seventeen. And this is obviously the zoning ordinance, so we're at odds there if we're gonna take the time to do the zoning ordinance. The master plan has to be done or should be done by two thousand seventeen. And secondarily, back day, if you take it in chunks, it is a lot, a lot easier. I've done this twice in the last twelve years. And believe me, it's a lot easier to do it in chunks. And I would strongly suggest that we update all of the MZEA, those are the state requirements. That was passed back in two thousand six and those absolutely need to be updated relatively soon. And definitions, I would recommend doing last because that's, as you put new stuff. Yeah, and you put new stuff in and all of a sudden you've got a new definition. So I'd kind of recommend doing that last, but that's just some recommendations.
Well, you're looking at a master plan two, then the next step would be also looking at a capital approvals plan. And that's something that should be looked at and to join up, so. There's some big responsibilities for you out there, that's for sure.
And just so we're clear, the city adopted a master plan in two thousand seven, two thousand seventeen as what it's due for its five-year review. I don't know if, maybe it's. Well, yeah, but it was reviewed in two thousand twelve as well. And so now it'll need to be reviewed again in two thousand. It wasn't changed in two thousand twelve. The act just says you have to review it, doesn't say you have to actually change it or update it. If you guys want to update it, that's fine, but that's a conversation that you could start early if you wanted to. You don't have to wait for the five years if you don't want to, you can start it now. But there's, you know, I think that the master plan still seems to be, you know, relatively, you know, timely and appropriate. It's not like it's outdated or anything, in my opinion, but it is there.
Does everybody have a hard copy of that master plan? Does everybody have a hard copy of that master plan?
Yeah, was McKenna right?
So it'd be best to move forward, you just, could we review these in next month's goal on what we're doing, or should we do something else?
That's up to you guys. I'll be here at the next meeting, just so you know, so I mean, you can always pick something and just tell me what to do, you know, that's fine, I don't have to be all that, but...
I'd like to have James and John's opinion too, and then maybe next week, we all put in our top, or month, we put our top three, then we just combine them, and then we see what those top choices are, you know, then we can go from there.
Sounds good to me. Maybe I'll need a motion to that, too. You good with that one, next to Stafford's?
We just have a couple additions on there, one, who's a new house? We have another new house that's going to be going in the Highland Hills area.
Took a while, but it's fine, my friend. Commissioner Lawrence?
I'm good.
I'm good. Next, we need a number nine.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
No?